Okay, all right, so we're gonna have the call to order and we'll start with the budget.
The United States of America is a republic which stands one nation, united in the middle of the world.
And now the roll call.
President.
Here.
Vice President.
Here.
Senator.
Here.
Secretary Thomas here. Trustee Gaten.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
President.
Trustee Iver.
Yeah.
Perfect, we're on the forum, and we will proceed. So 4.0 is public comment, do you have any? In Zoom land, please come in.
I see none.
Thank you. If not, we'll go to 5.1, preliminary fiscal year budget. And I don't know if Andy can have to be on Zoom or if he's bedridden at home. Elizabeth is gonna carry the ball.
Andy is on, Elizabeth, you have to unmute. Second, we're switching PowerPoints here and then we'll be ready. For some reason, I'm not able to unmute people. All right, good. Okay, I think we are good to go. Thank you for your patience here. And Andy, are you on?
Mute.
He is on, Elizabeth, but you have to unmute him. It's not letting me unmute him.
Yes, I am on.
Wonderful. All right. Well, Andy is with us, and I'm gonna take us through the PowerPoint presentation and do my best, in Andy's absent, to run through this. I pulled this together tonight in speaking with President Cook since it was on the agenda. And when we've got questions, we'll be happy to help as an executive team. And if there's any other additional follow-up that we can't get through this evening, we'll be back together again Tuesday. And so we'll be, we'll do the best we can. All right, so I just want to, just again, for an overview, what you would sort of received is a preliminary draft of the budget. There is still material narrative places of documentation that being placed into this, and we will be building this to present back to the board to pretend a budget back in January, on January 12. What we want to do, and what we've been doing since we last discussed in August and in September, we presented different aspects of what was going on the capital plan, talking about what was happening with wages, so that we could begin to build and pull everything together with the worksheets. So that is the process. The purpose for tonight is to give you an update of how it's looking. And again, get any feedback that we have as we build this. But for those that are new, our timeline that we have in front of us is, again, January will be the tentative, we'll go on review of the 30 days. We have a public hearing on the 16th of February. Then we will move forward for a vote to approve the budget on February 21st at our regular meeting, and then it goes off to the county board. And the county board normally moves on to finance and platics, and we'll present the budget, and then it's moved to the general board for acceptance. And then our budget is not considered adopted until they accept it, and that's under the Conservation District Act. We're now kind of in this new routine where it used to be we would back it up, we would not have it completely before this speaker starts. And so this accelerated process that we're under, we do start from here, which is great to have our budget already approved as we move into the first. Okay, I want to take you through, and this is on page 13 and 14, if you're looking at the material that was sent out or in the PDF page in the packet. It was, it was sent to you separate on pages 21 and 22. So this is showing all of the funds and the funds that we do work with, general fund, dedicated accounts, our debt service fund, capital asset management plan fund, natural resources management fund, and our insurance fund. The combined annual budget for all of funds includes a total revenue, and I don't, I'll point it here, so I'll refer you here on the column, of fiscal year 2024, of a revenue of $27,952,683. And then total expenditures for all of the funds at $28,892,824. And so this results with a change in total fund balance of $940,141, and that is including all funds. And that again is on page 13 and 14. Just some highlights, this is in your summary. For the specifics of our general fund, which is our operating fund, you see total budget and revenues increasing by $854,598, or 8.6% over the prior year. For total non-capital expenditures budgeted to increase by $546,415, or 5.5%. Using total personnel costs, $1,665, or 3.9%. And then total capital expenses budgeted, $894,600, which is an increase of $247,917 over the prior year, and we'll break these down into specifics. For all revenue, revenue is located in your budget documents, which goes into detail for each of the revenue streams that the district has, and that begins on page 17. In this, most of the revenue that comes from the district is discussed before, that our property taxes just under 78%, followed by our armlies revenue at 13.9%. And, and we go down, and we reach to the specifics that you can see, the idyllic details of what we include in that with our program fees, camping and shelter fees, and the different recoveries that we get from the foundation. So that's all broken out, really what we've proposed going forward, primarily property taxes in our main revenue source. Okay, if we go to personnel on the budget worksheets, we'll start with our expenditures. And personnel can be found beginning on page 22. And total wages are increasing 6.2% over the prior year. And this, again, just to clarify, is an economic increase of 4.7% for our non-contractual employees, and that'll be effective on April 1st of 2023. The budget that's being proposed also includes, as discussed with the board, our 4.7 adjustments, and that's an increase of 1% in total wages for nine, only nine employees that happen to hit their four-year or seven-year anniversary with the district. And so again, it's not added on, but it's under all other non-contractual employees receive only that 4.7%. So that 4.7 only affects nine employees that are in our system. It also includes other personnel seasonal wages, and that's a half percent. And wage cost, and that also includes additional staff, seasonal staff, that were added to the budget. And of course, our retirements and insurance is budgeted to decrease by 2.5%. And then the camp fund and dedicated accounts. These projects are the same projects that were presented back in September, so we haven't added any additional ones, and those can be found back in your budget. And if you go to the back, they're all broken down by areas. And the dedicated account starts on page 71, is listed right now, and then those specifics are there, but those projects have not changed. We will read those questions that you may have. Under our debt service fund, it's budgeted for a total expenditure of $13.1 million. It's required for all the contractual things that are due on our general obligation bonds, which we have $48.3 million outstanding, and then $2.4 million outstanding on the debt certificates that we use. For our natural resources special revenue fund, again, the expenses are similar to the prior year. We budgeted $744,000 for mitigation bank. These are not available at this time, and a lot of the school springs, but we are anticipating online. And then it also supports, we do have some of our staff members that are paying out of the natural resources account, and that includes our two full-time restoration apologists, and full-time habitat technicians, seven seasonals, and 50% of our volunteer coordinators, the other 50% is out of the general fund. And that is the highlights. Now, there's a lot of detail as you went through, and I guess I would turn it over to the board if there were specific questions as we read through that of changes. I do want to, the other thing I want to say is that on the capital expenditures, and I did highlight those, those were in the memo, since we shared that back earlier in the year, in August, there were additional $45,600 of other items moving forward. So we included that at this point, and those include some trail repairs, some concrete at one of the mechanic shops, a trailer replacement, some patio equipment for the lost value visitor center, at the wildlife resource center replacing some doors, and then a digital file archiving system is a change.
One question, and I think you said pension insurance is going down, that's unusual.
So we are part of the IPCC.
So the, the, can you guys hear me okay? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
The insurance premium is actually going up about 2.5% on an annualized basis, because it was locked in 13 months. On the savings, what makes it collectively, the pensions going down, so the benefits in total are going down, but it's really driven by the IMRF. IMRF required rate going down by more than 10%. So when you sum those two together, it drives the total benefits down. But health insurance is going up, but a very small amount.
On the pension thing, I didn't quite get that. Could you, can we keep that, Andy?
Yeah, the IMRF sets the required contribution rate based on what they're actually, I say that we need to, you know, have for funding. And it's driven down from almost 11% to under 10% for calendar year 23. So I think that was like a $30,000 or $40,000 savings, and then that drives the total net cost of benefits down when you, when you put the two together.
Just surprised with that, especially with the market being down and, yeah.
Well, everything's in arrears, right? They can't do it real time. It'll go back up a little bit next year, and if you remember, when we did the camper act for presentation, the district was more than 100% funded. So we've been going down from 12% for the last four consecutive years. This is the fourth or fifth consecutive year of a rate decrease. But you're absolutely right. It's almost a certainty that the next rate will be an increase.
Thank you.
And the details of that, if you go, in the detailed packet, you can leave the information on the return.
All right, so any other questions regarding the 2024 budget?
Yeah, I just need to know, I thought it was more than this, the compensation study, it says it's $25,000, is that accurate?
That's what we're budgeting for. We're not quite sure till we get the RFD's back, so those are out on the street now. I think with the timing, when initially, I think we looked at that, by the time we accept a firm to do the work, and they begin that, we very, we may have done some, and again, I don't know what those costs are gonna be yet. If we start them, they may start some preliminary work, that'll be in this year, and then the remainder in the next, this way.
Okay, any other trustees have a question for either Elizabeth or Andy? Or any other staff, or John or Ed? Well, thanks, Elizabeth. I think that was a good review, actually, I mean, the fact that we have done this in sort of a stepwise fashion, I think that's helped all of us sort of stay abreast of it. And then we'll see it back in January. And Andy, I wanted to thank you for your presence Monday. I thought it was well done, and obviously it was done with you not tell story, and you're not, and you did not feel well, so you have our best wishes and
You should probably. I'm actually feeling much, much better, the cough just coming back on tonight, but sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Your excuse, go get some chicken.
I didn't give Andy the whiz on the budget presentation, so we do miss him, and hope he's back here soon. Okay, to step in for part one.
Oh, then we'll go to the new business, and 6.1 is a review of the regular meeting agenda items for the 22nd. And I had looked at the agenda and spoken to Elizabeth about a couple of things that I thought the board might want some additional information or clarification on. So I think she's gonna proceed with that, and then if anyone else has questions about the agenda, now it's time to focus on.
Did I miss something about the rescind the lees? Then they, they had drawn dates or something, or what was that?
No, so the, what we have on one of them, 2287, that was approved last month, the actual resolution was correct. There was a chart in there that had percentages, and then it had the factor that's used to multiply. The motion had the back door, but it, obviously, if you use a percentage behind that, it's incorrect, all right? So they, they got crossed over, so that's why we don't want something that was published with a motion that looks to be less than, because the leases are greater than that, and so we are re-clarifying.
Elizabeth, could I add just one more comment? I need to clarify the answer that I gave, in looking, that health insurance, the premium is going up, but I'm remembering that there's four less lives on the plan. So budget to budget, it actually, the cost year over year is going down considerably. We've had some new employees come on that have waived the insurance coverage, as well as come on without families, you know, so the, so the cost of the district is much lower. That was all, sorry.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So that was one I wanted to clarify, why were we rescinding, so that's some questions, and we're gonna cover that. We covered, at the time, the preliminary agenda went out, the trustees that are filling in on the IED meeting, and so that's all been set. The other item that we wanted to talk about was the checks and invoicing that we received from the Department of Transportation. And the summary is, if you had read that, the district out of, this is a project that finished up many years ago, all of a sudden received two invoices. We're not the only unit of government that understands, we receive invoices from the Department of Transportation. And so basically, this is to move forward, we've had the funds available. It's just a matter of now, we are questioning the one invoice, the one we believe for the $11,174.71 to be accurate. The other one in our review, in our bookkeeping, is that when they sent out the invoice, they didn't go back to the contract language, and so we let the correspondence, we did send a letter, John prepared that, we sent that off to them, just saying that we believe the percentage that the district is to pay is not what they're invoicing. So what we're recommending is that we paid the amount forward of what we understand it to be, and then if they have a disagreement, at least we're making good effort to get that there, and we'll have that discussion. But I believe that they are in line with what they have assessed us on that second one. And then the 1210, with the transfer of funds from one budget line, again, this was not budgeted, or this wasn't expected. The money was sitting in the account, but not budgeted because we didn't expect this invoice, we assumed all was taken care of, or at least we knew that we needed, that maybe the state was never gonna attend as a bill, so, you know, when you were helpful, right, but no, so that's where that is. Any questions on those two?
Thank you, that's, we've done 12.7 and 12.8, we've done 12.9, and we've done 12.10. Those were all things that I had spoken about, and I appreciate the clarification. And then we're trying to also come to 6.2, and have a discussion on that, but is there anything, would any other trustees have anything else on that consent, consent that they wanted to raise at this time? Okay, if not, then we have Ed here and Elizabeth, and this school springs wetland litigation bank sailed. So what stood out to me was that we were discounting the wetland by 20%, and I believe this is this would establish in a sense of precedent for dealing with the McHenry Department of Transportation, or perhaps any other government agency, as it was explained to me. There is language that says we're open to cooperation with other government agencies suggesting that we might discount the value of these assets. And I had asked Elizabeth, who suggested the 20% discount? And I think the answer is that the McHenry County Department of Transportation suggested that we sell this to them for a 20% discount. So I wasn't sure what the board felt about that, whether we should negotiate a smaller discount, because these are assets. And and should we get, we may not want to get, we may want to be cooperative to the other governmental agencies, but they shouldn't dictate the terms. So I thought this was worth some discussion, and if Ed or Elizabeth, if I've misspoken, then please clarify.
Elizabeth, I could do a little bit of background with McDot, if you'd like. So we have a very long history with McDot in terms of wetland litigation, that probably stretches back at least a decade. The difference between what, what we are proposing now, or what has been proposed in the past, is that we would do individual project litigation, so if there was road repairs or bridges that McDot were doing, was doing, we would find a site, a specific site, and then the mitigation would be on that site for that individual project. And I believe at the time, the average rate we were receiving was about $35,000 an acre for wetland mitigation. So once the bank was established, and we reviewed, wetland, wetland mitigation credits were not moving pretty fast on the downturn. But once we established the bank, and the economy picked up again, we took a look at all the, the going rates in the area, and that's how we came up with the proposal that the board approved for the existing price structure that we have. So we have a pretty long history of cooperating with them in, in projects that specific, that are specific to McHenry County. Also, the sales we've made thus far, I think most of them have been to government agencies, but we have not done a discount. But I believe that when the, when the language was included in the, the wetland banking policy that the board approved it, I believe that that was in there in part because of a desire to cooperate with other McHenry County entities, as opposed to the entire region. So that might give you a little bit of background on what we've done.
So as a practical matter, our current rate or market rate is $96,000 per acre of wetland, and the rate that this is being presented at is $80,000 an acre, or 20% discount. And we're talking about 3.3 acres. They're gonna pay full market rate for the linear feed of stream bank. So, I mean, does the board have any comment about this? Is this the way we should proceed? Look for some future favor from
Well, yeah, is it Yeah, it says, what did, hey, yeah, what comes around goes around, so something happens, you know, or something, or you better
So Elizabeth has kind of a list that we've assembled going back the last few years. One thing I would say is we know that McDot has additional credit, significant numbers, that are gonna be coming up in the next few years for additional bridge projects. We think that's somewhere in the, the area of 10 to 15 credits, so we should be aware of that going forward, too, that there is, there are additional credits being generated, but, oh, Elizabeth, you wanna talk about
Can I make, can I make a comment real quick? It's Kelly. I just want, I just want to let you know, we passed a resolution Tuesday night, and it's to, it's $96,000 an acre. So the resolution that we approved for 3.33 acres and 300 feet was $499,680.
I, I think I, I don't want to speak for McDot, but I think that they did not want to assume that our board would agree to a discount. And they do need to get the credits lined up for their projects. So I, that's probably, Kelly, I believe that's probably why that figure came through.
Not casey.
Yeah, not good casey number.
Because I'm looking at the, the documentation, it says, price per acre, $96,000, in parentheses, pending approval of government discount. So I was under the impression, we voted on this, that that was the government discount. Nobody's explained differently to us. So, just so you know, we have approved the full amount. Just keep that in mind when you're discussing this.
Well, let's go to the next.
I didn't, that's not recorded, is it?
And congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I think we're in the catbird seat, and I mean, I have no experience in dealing with the Department of Transportation. Obviously, we're, this is our, you know, county organization, we're all in business to serve the taxpayers. So it's sort of like one hand washing the other, it comes out of one budget, and eventually the taxpayers pay for it, I presume, unless there are some federal monies that the county taps for its transportation projects, and if there were federal monies involved, I would certainly like to not give the federal government a savings personally, that, so.
So in other words, if they don't get it from the McHenry County Conservation, they just go and get it from somebody else, that's all. There's all kinds of people that have it.
Yeah, they have to go to another venue to get it. Obviously, having our bank and working collaboratively, you know, we work very cooperatively with the county, and that has served us well for a variety of things over the years. And that's what partners do. I do acknowledge that one of the things that we've talked about as we were reviewing of this and some other changes to the policy, is that with inflation right now, the mitigating nation bank, we need to reassess, and we're planning to come back to the board with next month to talk about how our rates are, of what we're selling credits for, although we don't have any now, once these are sold, but when they're renewed up, and we get the available credits, that we increase our prices. And so going forward, it'll cost more based on where things are.
Okay, so go ahead, Sean, you go ahead.
What's the history of this counter and all that?
We're just new into this business, so.
This is our first bank.
Oh, okay. So this would set a precedence, that's why I'm, all right.
Can I add something? I'm on the sale review team, and so, and it was involved in policies and stuff like that, but so the policy says something to the effect that the district may establish a discount for government partners, or something like that. So in my opinion, approving a sale at a given price does not establish a discount going forward, just so you know, so you know, you could approve a sale, doesn't establish a discount, because you approve a particular price today, doesn't, it's not the same, so. You're not, you're not locked in.
Yeah, I support.
Yeah, I, I support giving the, the full, you know, no discount for it. And just a, uh, observation, when I was on the YMCA board a long time ago, when they were wiping thirty-one, they offered a hundred thousand dollars for a strip of land that is right across from, from home people there on, uh, on thirty-one where the YMCA is. And we, we rejected it. We ended up getting a million dollars for that same piece of land. So I feel, I don't blame them for trying, but I think our answer should be no.
Well, my, I, I'd rather go with, uh, staff recommendation because if they have a relationship with people and different projects might be coming up, I think they wanna make sure that we're, are right on that probably. So that's, that's just.
Okay, John?
Comment, and this crosses over to a different arena, and that is, when you, when you're talking about the partnership, you, you were asking before about the, the, you know, what part? Crossing over into the transportation side of things. They have, there have been times where the district did not have the resources to complete a section of bike path, and they came in and did it for us. Um, and I believe the section between the, right on fourteen between Culvers and Walmart, uh, was its freeway partnership there, uh, and the conservation district, uh, in, 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 in the, in the McHenry County D O P, Department of Transportation, came in and paid for the local match. And I don't remember off the top of my head, had to be somewhere around fifty thousand dollars that they paid. So, and to, to give the, the board the genesis of that relationship, twenty years ago, it was very, very, um, divided. It was a conservation district and the transporta, and the transportation. And, and I, I, I will even quote what one former transportation engineer many, many years ago said to me, "How dare you try to cross our road with your bike, bike then." Just what he said to me. But over the course of years, we developed a better relationship with them. They came and reached out to us. And Ed was talking about some of those early days where we were working deals with them, where they said, "We will do the wetland banking with you guys. Just tell us what it costs and, and, you know, what do you need? You need a, a side path on this bridge that we're putting in here." And sometimes we did, and sometimes we didn't. And so we built that relationship over the course of about fifteen or eighteen years. Um, and, and the price is the price. And you asked a question before President Cook that was, a lot of their projects are eighty, twenty. The, the feds are providing eighty percent of it, and, and they're providing twenty for local, that's why I'm providing twenty percent of it. I don't know if this particular project is that, but many of them are that way. Um, in fact, the one that they helped us with that bike path was in eighty, twenty split. So, uh, they came in and paid the twenty percent. Uh, so those, um, those kinds of, it, it took many years to build a relationship. We now can pick up the phone and have a conversation with those folks and, and go from there. But they also understand the prices of doing business. And I think, uh, a point was made that they would go somewhere else and probably pay the, you know, the ninety-six thousand somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm gonna pay along to some of what John said. We've also worked with them to establish a good launch for their bridge, bridge project at the far end of the county. Uh, we've been a recipient of the county's wetland, uh, grant program, which is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. I do know on the north branch, when we had a drainage issue coming off of one of our ponds, they repaired it when they did work on Keysdale Road. So I think John, John really summed it up. Well, we, we have a good working relationship with them. Um, I think probably better than a lot of county conservation agencies and with friends.
Well, yes. Did we pull the number ninety-six thousand out of, um?
It, it was.
Active market?
Yes, it was a comparison for water sheds.
Okay.
So this was dealing with what current prices were in both the Kids walking and the Fox Water Shed. We came up with what we believe would be a, a, a good match for that. Um, and I think Elizabeth alluded to it. We will be sold out of wetland credits with this. Uh, but we anticipate more coming online this spring as we meet standards.
So ninety-six is a com, is a competitive price. It's not like they could go someplace else and get it for, for, um, you know, eighty thousand dollars.
The market's adjusting and going upwards, so.
Yeah.
Depending on how they're managing the sales of credits, we know we're lagging. We need to make an adjustment to ours, but this is in it before we bring it to supply and demand.
You're right. Well, I don't know.
Well, specifically, I mean, the Department of Transportation also was very instrumental in positioning and framing the F A B four twenty issue with the county as a whole and the cooperation to, to seek some kind of a new design.
Yeah, I just hate to have a shoe sewn in the foot by trying to get every last dollar out of it when we have a good relationship.
I'll withdraw my advice. Okay, well, what if we did a ten percent?
I don't have an objection to the twenty percent reduction. But like Elizabeth said, if we're already lagging, what is that differential now then, right? If that's, is that a forty percent reduction to what the current market's at? Or, I mean, I don't know if you know those numbers or not, and I'm not asking for, uh, like an answer, I'm just.
No, it's a great question, and we're researching it now. Um, and, and again, one of the hard things about doing this research is, is it's where is the project? Where are the available credits within that sub watershed? Out of the watershed to buy credits, which pushes the price up. So there's a lot of different factors, but I would say you'll see somewhere between a fifteen and twenty percent increase, uh, as we move into the next round of it. Now, that can go down too. Drops, the price drop.
Well, I'll, uh, I'll frame it as the board think of a ten percent reduction. So then a twenty percent reduction. Does anyone think that's a reasonable option?
I would, uh, I would throw out there that if staff feels that, uh, twenty percent is reasonable for it, if that, I would be okay with that. I don't know how to raise this board, but, like, you know, they made a lot of great points about how McDot has solved this in the past and.
We're not dealing on a day-to-day basis. The board does not staff the end. We have to, I feel that we have to go with.
Well, we had a good, had a good discussion, and so, um, throw a block to propose. Then, okay, consensus ahead and, uh, okay, perfect, thank you.
So that'll be another board business on Tuesday night, and then this specific motion will be available.
And then, uh, six point three is, uh, McHenry, uh, the city of McHenry's request for a letter supporting their twelve-year extension to a tax increment financing district. Um, and Elizabeth can give us some, the background. And I certainly had no problem with that. They're not asking for any more than a letter of support.
Correct, yes. So normally, the, the district had gotten into taking a position when tax increment financing districts were set up that we would remain neutral. We wouldn't attend the hearings and the meetings and things because as a countywide organization versus, let's say, a school or another, you know, government within this valley, um, we're a small, very small percentage of, of the dollars. In this case, this is an extension, it's not establishing something new. Um, they're trying to work to build upon the, the Fox River waterfront area, which is good for, uh, tourism and development. And of course, um, their growth there, which would be great to see. They cannot, uh, move forward to get an extension because of the legislative procedure unless they get a letter of support from all the taxing bodies. And so initially, I valued the thing as the neutral. And I, and wanted to say that there's something, and I, I didn't know enough about the extensions to say, if there's something specific that prevents you from, let us know. This is what I did find out, and therefore we should send a letter of support so they can move forward with this. The county has, uh, accepted, uh, and has sent a resolution as well. We passed this resolution, uh, that's advanced as well.
I can add a little more information if you'd like about that.
He's thinking.
So, yeah, the county did pass a resolution Tuesday night that we are in support of that. The reason why it's an extension, not a completely new ask, is because they only want twelve years. And because what they were trying to accomplish in the past twenty-one years was not fully, um, done due to various reasons. Um, and they, they thought that they wouldn't have, because they did get enough of the, uh, infrastructure and the updating done, that they might not have been approved for a whole new one. So, um, they're, they're still looking to improve some portion of Green Street and then, um, really improve a lot in Main Street in, in downtown McHenry. You know, there's a couple different downtowns, streets there. So we'd have Main Street, there's Green Street, and then also, um, Riverside. They're looking to improve Riverside also.
Any, uh, questions or any comments from the trustees?
I guess my only comment is as long as they're not, you know, having any negative effects on, on the environment, and that's what we stand for, then we should buy support.
Right. I think we're all in agreement on that, yeah, okay. So, uh, going into other, general category, other, that gives me a lot of room. So, so, uh, should I ask about the treasures, uh, uh, you know, in the report? Are there any items from, uh, the summary of, of, uh, expenses that anyone wants to pull ahead of the agenda for next week?
You know, I wanted to, I could not find the treasury people.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it's in there, it's in.
Been along.
But I, I, I'll ask the question because there was an item about chainsaw safety specialists. And it was a charge for one thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. And, um, I, I mean, because we have a lot of folks in the natural resource, uh, department who, um, deal with chainsaws, but why do we have to go outside our group? For safety certification? So, I mean, maybe it's a straightforward answer.
I can, part of it is that you have to have a certain accreditation in order to teach it. Part of it is, uh, we also teach our volunteers and we teach, uh, seasonal teacher. So it's a kind of a reoccurring thing that goes on.
But if we, if we had someone in the staff who was a certified instructor, we would save ourselves fifteen hundred dollars a year. Uh, I mean, is that inaccurate?
No, and I will, I will go back and check on, on whether we've had somebody at least in our division that's trying to do that, that one guy.
I, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't know much more about it than that. Um, I, I do know it takes someone who's certified, uh, you know, those are, you know, some of the most dangerous tools that we do operate, so.
Right, but we have people that operate, have operated, so.
And know how to do it.
Yeah, so it's just a question. I mean, I don't have a problem with the fourteen hundred dollar charge, but it, it's a big enough charge that we could certify somebody in the, in either of those departments to be the instructor, then we.
I can add to this if, uh, if I'm allowed to.
Thanks, Barry, thank you.
Sure, so I set that up, uh, President Cook, I set that up. Uh, it's once every three years, it's formal training. Uh, so we have two instructors that come down once every three years. The, the two years in between each of those trainings, then we do conduct our own in-house training. It's a refresher. Um, so it's bucket truck training, it's, um, cutting techniques. Um, of course, after, every three years, we do have new staff onboard. It's good to have professional, um, professionals train those staff. Um, and so it, it, it's a high-risk job that they perform, and especially with new staff, it's good to have, uh, those professionals train them. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, it's once every three years. It is not annual, if that helps.
But, yes, I think that's, um, it seems to make, have it make more sense to me. So I withdraw my, my suggestion that we do that in-house. And I'm comfortable with the fourteen hundred dollar charge. So if anyone else comes up with something that they want to be clarified from the treasurer's report, please let Elizabeth know and she'll, uh, she and Andy will work it out before the next meeting. Along the lines of other, uh, I want to thank, uh, Lloyd and Chris for their work on the workshop having to do with our, um, funding, future funding options. Um, and I want to, uh, thank Sean and Ray, uh, for their efforts in the, uh, R F E having to do with reviewing the auditor. So all of that involves time commitments, and I, we're appreciative of it. On the workshop issue, as was mentioned, um, there's gonna be another set of workshops after the first of the year. I'll be going February into March. Uh, that will have to do with the next phase of the, uh, referendum project, okay? So I think the board, uh, needs to have representation and, um, it's, you know, it's both a burden and an opportunity. So, um, and we're restricted to two board members to, to stay within the, um, uh, Open Meetings Act requirements. Um, I was able to backstop Lloyd and, um, Chris. If, if they weren't able to attend, uh, then I was able to attend. So we have two representatives at each of the meetings. These are Zoom meetings, so that's a little less of a commitment than, uh, than an in-person meeting. I think for, um, in a certain sense, the board members with the longest tenure, uh, looking forward, they'll be seeing this, uh, through, uh, so they, it's, uh, an opportunity for them to, uh, um, be involved. And on the other hand, you know, sometimes there's advantages to continuity, having, you know, someone take it out as a vet project, and then they see it through from start to finish. Although that's obviously a bigger commitment of one's, uh, personal time. So it doesn't make any difference to me, any of this very qualified board could sit on this. Um, please just let, let me know, uh, or Spike asked me and let Elizabeth know. Just, uh, if not, um, um, I may put names in the hat and start, you know, start calling. And, uh, so, the worst case scenario, we could do this on a rotating basis. We would not have the same, uh, two people involved, but, you know, based on availability, one, one or, one or two of us would show up at every, at every meeting. So please, uh, it's, I think it's an important issue and, and we don't have the dates yet. In, in part, we're waiting till, so, do we get the, uh, cast of characters? Because then those individuals can have a, a role in selecting the dates. But basically, we're looking, I think Elizabeth, you're correct, when you're anticipating this to be, uh, three or four meetings in, in, in late January, February, maybe extending to March. And then we'll have the whole, uh, board meet again in special section, session to review this. And because it's a Zoom meeting, if you were planning to take a vacation, you could still attend. Okay, all right, enough said about, about.
And, uh, President Cook, we did have one volunteer, just you ever heard, had a meeting there, and we mailed him a, a send-up.
Oh, perfect.
Said he would be willing to join again. It was fun on the first.
That's right, that's right.
All right, good, so that's, uh.
Yeah, I can as well.
All right, so Sean would, okay, good.
Do you need a backup?
Right, you're back. And then speaking of backups, uh, Sean is also gonna be our representative at the I A T V. And, uh, Ray is gonna back him up, Lloyd is gonna back them both up, and Elizabeth is gonna. And Elizabeth is going to be there to tell them what. It'll be the puppet man. Well.
Yeah, for directors, I probably have a few things to stop making the board with. So um you may, we've been uh this past year, right, the paddockish group, uh we assisted them and they've been quite a bit in the first year. So that's gone well. One of the things that had been under discussion when we were trying to work with them. Some of the challenges for paddlers and having the ability to access because of limitations on and remember who was saying is it navigable? Not navigable and all that stuff that went into it. Well, there was a group in the Illinois Environmental Council um with partners from paddlers. And environmental groups and the district was a part of that, as well as the Illinois Association of Park Districts. Um, have been working and a piece of legislation um was prepared. Uh, we provided some additional language. To protect public entities before the bill got placed into uh into business sponsoring as it went out to the. Research Bureau. And so House Bill thirty eight forty four is now available. They were hoping this didn't start it. They wanted to introduce during veto. Obviously, veto is coming to a quick end here, so I don't think it's going to move. But um I will send information out to you, but it does have language that would provide some what they were looking and hoping to have. To increase paddling access uh for recreational purposes. So um so that is a movement. Um, the Friends of Hacklack. Uh, did their ten year anniversary celebration and it was the goal management art show. Uh, kudos to Ed and his leadership and the Friends of Hacklack. It's been a great partnership with the district. Um, it was wonderful to celebrate uh with the group and everybody in the the county that was there for ten years. That's quite an accomplishment. On with the new referee manager, we had some time to spend, not only with her at that event, but with the Chicago Wilderness Event. She came down and was beginning to do it. So it's a very, it's a great uh board partnership with with resources and and they're doing great work, yeah. Um, the we also had a table at the Greenland Expo. This is with the environmental defenders in McHenry County. And then with um McHenry County College. And again, so we tabled at that event. That went very well. Um, the leadership team, we just got back two days locally. We had our strategic planning fleet. Uh, all in the prep so we can come forward with our board and the foundation board and laying some general guidelines and what we believe. Our priorities going forward for a three year, five year. Or to presenting that, once we get a date, and I will be sending out a new doodle, since the date that we had selected did not work for everybody. So we look into your email with that. Um, landscapes is out, a lot of great land programs. Obviously, we have snow on the ground. Um, the uh lot of activities and and lights and trails and things to take advantage of all times during the year, so that's ongoing. And then um the other news related to staffing, I wanted just to share with the board during a public meeting. Uh, but I just learned out um that Brad Woodson, who has been with the district for thirty one years. Uh, yesterday announced his retirement uh from the district. So his last day will be uh December sixteenth. And he is leaving, uh going back home to Iowa where he does have a farm. And uh we'll be entering in the not-for-profit working for what they call a practical practical farmers of Iowa. And doing that type of work. So kind of getting back home. So we will be celebrating him uh with a resolution in December. Um, we thank him and really appreciate thirty one years despite a a tenure and all the great work that he's done. Uh, for the district and that. So he will sadly, he met Zeta, I don't know if you have any other comments to say?
I just feel like I've lost my rhythm.
And so there will be a uh some ripples going out from that, having to do with staffing and organization and. Sure, we'll hear more about those repercussions, the ripples, whatever you want to call them.
We'll be sharing that. Yeah, we're working on that. Uh, there were some other things. Yeah, yeah. Um, and the other thing I just want to announce, I know we'll do a formal recognition, but I just wanted to do a shout out for Christie. You know, Christie, she's had it six months with us, but she achieved her certification as a municipal clerk. Um, this is something that she initiated before coming to the district. Uh, had to put it on hold when she was over in the police department because it didn't qualify. And when she was promoted and moved up into this position, she was able to finalize that. And become certified. And so. I understand for what she has to do, but for our record keeping, she's on it. She's got it and.
My my last uh comment, um I attended on Zoom the uh hearing that the Illinois EPA had. Looking for public comments on uh three hundred West Arnold Magnetics regarding their um. Application for uh the emissions permit having to do with what goes out the chimney. But uh I was simply a an attendee of uh Steve Grossmark, our. Uh attorney who's uh been involved with this litigation having to do with groundwater. Uh, he uh. posed a number of questions, I think the answers to which hopefully will be forthcoming. And um the um district attorney from the county. Made comments that were uh. Very objective and uh not very flattering to Arnold Magnetics. So it'll be interesting to see how the Illinois EPA. Handles both that request and then the uh the subsequent response to the groundwater. Issue would still remains a question. All right, um, anything else?
Oh, any update on that accident in the hollows?
Chief, uh, are you on? I think more.
Me, yes, I'm on.
The accident at the Hollows Conservation Area. Any updates on that?
Um, no, there's no uh no real updates, but Chris is doing an investigation. So what happened was the accident came out. Uh, in the area of fourteen and three oaks and it was dispatched to McHenry County Sheriff's Office. So they went out there and uh eventually they could not find the accident and then it was learned. Um, that it was over in our Hollows property. So Chris responded. Um, by there was a little bit of a delay in his response because county had spent a great deal of time, you know, kind of searching the area and going, we can't find it. It's gone. And then um truth came out. Anyways, uh he was investigating it and uh, you know, the did did the best he could with the information. That he was told, but a couple of things didn't make sense. So he was able to use our flock camera system. And observe a a couple of the missing pieces. Uh, when you in police work, we know that when things don't make sense. Uh, either uh somebody's intentionally not telling you the truth or you're they're leaving out pieces, right, um of of. Of information that that connect the the dots. And so um. He has been working on following up um and getting those license plates and trying to identify uh both witnesses and involved parties. In that accident. Um, some charges will be uh forthcoming. Uh, probably for uh reckless driving and possibly for filing a false police report, uh dependent on how everything kind of pans out. Um, but some of the persons were juveniles. And so uh that, you know, if there are certain types of offenses that if you get a citation. As a juvenile, it revokes your driving privileges until you are twenty one years of age. And so um, so he hasn't really been getting a high level of cooperation. So it, you know, it's really just going to depend on the evidence. And the state's attorney's comfort level, where this is going to go. Uh, nobody's investigating with the intentions of being a punitive, of course. Um, but it's very difficult to do an investigation when people are intentionally not providing you with information. So um, he's doing a great job. And uh as as always, we're getting a high level of cooperation from the sheriff's office uh as well as the state's attorney's office. Now, uh, the important thing about this is uh there was no real property damage other than to the person's vehicle and um. Uh, nobody was hurt uh other than a thumb injury, which was treated uh very quickly and the person was released, uh, you know, right, right. Uh, they I they actually do think they went, they were transported to hospital, but they were released less than thirty minutes later. Uh, so they were actually released before Chris even what started putting pieces together. So uh, no injury, no property damage, which is good news. Uh, bad behavior on our sites, which is bad news, uh, but we're working to figure it out and discourage it for the future.
Thank you.
Picture in the paper, look like broadside. It's in the Northwest Herald? Yeah, it was on page two. So when you open up the paper, it was on a goddamn eye. It was like a cap of paint. And it had a big picture of the of the car, her car, uh, I guess the truck, I don't know, the truck that hit them. It was a van. About broadside, right behind the driver's door, all the way to the end of the back door.
They're pretty hard to.
Look that way.
So when when it came out, um, we we it was reported as a single vehicle accident and, you know, through Chris's investigation. He he learned that there was another vehicle involved that had left the scene, you know, before we had taken the full report. So he's still working the details out. Um, the these are young people making bad decisions. Uh, and there there was no indication uh that uh there was any intoxicating factor. Other than uh youth and adrenaline. But uh, but we're we're we're, he's still working to uh get all the pieces uh put together. But yes, everybody's very, very lucky that that. There was nobody seriously hurt.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no more business, then let's return. So what they can motion to return. Oh, well, Ray reminds me, public comment number two before we return. Hearing done, let's uh go down the.
Yes.
Vice President down?
Yeah.
Second hearing comment, yes.
Yes. Yes.